Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Village of Gurnee Planning and Zoning Board for this Wednesday, February 6, 2019. Can we have a roll call, please?
Bow.
Here.
Garrity.
Here.
Jordan Toff.
Here.
Pass.
Here.
Paysek. Riley.
Here.
And Sula.
Present. We do have a quorum. If everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go to the formal agenda, I'd like to cover two off items. First, I'd like to recognize the resignation of Dick McFarlane. He served on the Plan Commission and zoning board for, or planning and zoning board for, what, probably close to 20 years? And made a lot of great contributions over the course of time, and he'll be missed. That leads me into introducing Laura Riley is our newest member of the Planning and Zoning Board. Laura is a twenty-some-odd-year resident of the village, is married, and has two children in the school district, and is a realtor here in town. So, welcome Laura.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the meeting that was held on December 5th. Does anybody have any questions or comments regarding the 5th's minutes? If not, a motion to approve?
Motion to approve is written.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I've requested that we pull the December 19th minutes off of the agenda this evening. Staff and I had some conversations, and we're reworking some of the language to make sure that we include the discussion that we had on the zoning hardship, because it wasn't mentioned in the original draft. So, if you have any comments beyond that that you want to share with staff on the side between now and next meeting, go ahead and do that. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for the Dunkin' located at 5414 Route 132, Suite 400. Do you have staff report, please?
Yep. Suresh Patel is seeking a special use permit to allow the establishment and operation of a drive-through without a bailout lane for an existing Dunkin' facility. The subject property is located at 5414 Route 132, Suite 400, and is zoned C2PUD, Community Commercial, as a planned unit development. As with all special use petitions, the Planning and Zoning Board will make a recommendation that will be forwarded to the Village Board for their determination. The petitioner is in attendance to present his request and answer any questions the Board may have.
Thank you, Clara. As this is a public hearing, I would request that you please stand and be sworn in by the Village Attorney. Right hand. Sort of tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Thank you. At this point in time, are we having a technical difficulty with this matter?
Yes.
Are you ready?
Just kidding.
Do you think you have a trace?
Yeah, that's as good as it's going to get, unfortunately.
Okay.
At this late stage.
These plans are in the packet as well.
This is the same stuff that's in the packet?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Was that in the packet?
Yes. Yeah. But the only reason I'm asking the question is there's nothing has changed from what we received.
No.
Okay, at this point in time, I'll turn the floor over to the petitioner. You need to use the microphone. Is there anything you'd like to add? I turned it around.
Hello. I'm Vishalik Tirmal. I'm working with the owner Suresh Patel in capacity of his architect. We're proposing a drive-through.
Can you speak up just a little bit?
Hello? Yeah, we're proposing a drive-through lane at the existing Dunkin' Donuts facility. Right now, it's a walk-in space. There is a lane here that's available to us, and much earlier in our preliminary discussions with the village, we went into propose a drive-through lane, and we worked with the third-party village planner, traffic consultant, who suggested that we propose the drive-through in a way where, since we're taking away this bypass lane, we can bypass the traffic in this manner. So, we worked with that consultant, and then we refined the layout further in and came up with the layout that has been proposed, is on the screen right now. The drive-through window is located at this point, which is 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11 cars from the ordering, no, 10 cars from the ordering station. And we, currently, there is a existing parking in this area which we had to take out, but we are compensating it back with the drive-through. So, since it's probably 11 spaces, and we're compensating it with 11 spots that are drive-through spots. Also additionally, in keeping with the village comments on deficiency in the parking, we had approached the ownership that's there in the Baymont Hotel, and they have a written agreement with the owner of the property to share 15-spot parking, which happens to be way off somewhere here, if you zoom out onto the map. From drive-through standpoint, it would be very efficient and more profitable for the owner, not just that, but also for the community. It would be more convenient, especially in winters, having a drive-through would help citizens of the village to have a more convenient way of shopping for their coffee in the morning. Also, to address some of the concerns that may arrive in terms of the parking, the other spaces that we have over here currently are in office building, and then there's a restaurant. And their operations hours are much, much different than what a coffee shop operates at. So, the peak loads of, for example, of a coffee shop is more towards the morning time, whereas for a restaurant, it's in the afternoon, and for a business, it's throughout the day, but it's not much of a parking that they accommodate when it's probably a three, two or three spots that they have. So, that analysis was done from the village's side in terms of the parking. And then, we came up with this proposal, and today we are seeking your approval on the drive-through lane. Thank you. Do you want to add to this?
I can take any questions. I think you covered it. Any questions from the members of, yes, Dave?
Does Dave have a comment?
Sure.
Yeah, I guess my primary concern really lies with the, what would be the south side of the building, on the side where the drive-through is proposed, and the order center where the bank of parking is being removed. Now, on the left-hand side along the building, we're now being reduced to a total of four standard parking spaces and two handicap spots. So, what I'm concerned about is for those individuals within the village that prefer to park right in front of a building, or as close to the door as possible, either because of inclement weather, or just because they prefer to park close to the front door, or they've got a vanload of eight kids, and they want to not have them schlep through the parking lot. So, I think for those folks, the default method of arriving is going to be to come through that parking lot and come zipping around the corner in front of the building, and if that parking bank on the left is full, there is nowhere for them to go, and I don't even know really how they're going to turn around, because they're going to be going nose-in east. They're going to get about two-thirds of the way in before they figure out that there isn't anywhere to go. All the parking on the left is full, and so it's going to be a very challenging backup, to back up across the entire front of that building, where at that point, they start to conflict with the entrance to the drive-through in order to get to the parking that's on the west side of the building, or try to perform maybe a six-point turnaround at the very end of that two-way in order to come out nose-first back to the west side. So, you know, I just don't think that's very wise and very safe. Now, again, we're talking, you know, when is that going to happen during the day? In my opinion, it doesn't matter when it happens during the day, whether it's peak time, off-peak time, you know, if it happens, it happens. And if it happens once, in my opinion, it's too many times, and I don't think it creates a very safe environment across the front of that building.
Any other questions or comments?
Is that a?
Yes, Tim.
Berm that is between where the cars are lining up and the parking spaces?
That's a landscaping island over there, so.
Please use the microphone.
Hello. Yeah, that's, this portion you're talking about, yeah. That's a landscaping island, just to kind of segregate the existing parking and the thoroughfares from the drive-through.
So, my question is, if that landscaping was removed, would there be enough, to the Commissioner's point, would that be enough to be able to navigate some sort of turn? Or is that a hindrance to making a, you know, what would be a six-point turn to get out? Because I see exactly what he's talking about.
Yeah. I think that's an excellent idea. We could increase this lane area so that it's more smoother turn. We would have to, however, move this preview, ordering board somewhere here probably, so it's at the end of the lane, it's a good area for maneuvering. We are open to that discussion, to make this work. We'll definitely be able to do that. Thanks.
I have to say, I went over there and looked at the whole thing, and Dave brought up a good point. I did not even think about that. I had a spot to turn around in. I would assume that the handicap spots are not going to be full that often, so I would think that that would be an option most of the time. Also, I don't know how much space there is, like the line space beside the handicap spot. Would there be room in there to do that?
Yes. So, you're talking about the area which is hatched in yellow stripes?
Correct.
Yeah. That's an option that we could explore.
I don't know if it would, if you could make it wide enough, I don't know if there's room there, but to make a spot like that where you could use that to pull into to turn around.
Yeah.
But Dave's right, you get stuck in there, and you've got no place to go. I guess if you took out an early portion of the island so that they get back into there and turn around, because I doubt you're ever going to have enough cars to back up that far into that stacked lane. I mean, your numbers that you gave on here from some of the other restaurants, they don't get that high. And I can't imagine this location is going to be that busy that you're going to end up with more than five or six cars in there. So, that might be an option, but yeah, you're right. As is, I think it could be trouble.
Laura, Brian?
Hi.
Okay. I think, I agree. I think Dave raises an excellent point. When you factor in there as well, it's not a single-user building, so it could be an inconvenience for other tenants in the building as well. From a practical point of view, I don't think you can totally get rid of the landscaping berm, because you need someplace to put the ordering.
Correct.
The ordering board.
Where is the ordering?
So, currently, it's right now here.
So, actually, there's, I mean, there's two places of stacking here. There's one section of stacking for the ordering board.
Right.
And then the second area stacking for the drive-through. And I personally think that the median or berm should be there, because I think it preserves the ability to clearly track what you're supposed to do. That being said, I, we're creating like a dead-end cul-de-sac without a bulb to turn around in. Yes, Trace?
I just wanted to point out that when Bill looked at this, he looked at it as if the turnaround area would be the handicap parking spaces, as you indicated. One, they either may not be taken, occupied, there's two handicap parking spaces up front there. Or you could use the extra, like you said, the striped-off space. A handicap parking space is 18 feet, 16 feet wide, so it's seven feet wider than a normal parking space, which is nine feet wide, so there should be ample room. One of the other things you could do is what we normally do when you have a dead-end parking lot, is you would just eliminate a parking space, stripe it off, and that would be the area where people could do the maneuvers to do your three-point turn. So, that would be another option.
I would be for that. I think that's like a designated turnaround.
The island, carving off any of the island, I don't see how that's.
No, you're talking about, you're talking about having one of those designated, one of those parking spaces that flush up against the businesses.
Correct.
Where you're saying making one of those parking spaces a designated turnaround.
Correct.
Okay.
I'm just saying that I don't think carving off any of that island is going to help you with maneuvers, with doing a turn.
Yeah, based on the testimony here, I agree now.
Yeah, because you've got back, cars stacking up there at the order board anyway, so even if you take the back end of the island off, you might have cars there anyhow.
I'm not at all a fan of considering the handicap space being a possible turnaround. I've had horrible experiences with handicap parking spaces when I was a regular user of them, and you wouldn't believe how often people crowd handicap spots, and the person using the handicap space has to encroach into the hash spaces in order to be able to get in and out of their car. I mean, I.
Which is illegal legally.
What's that?
Which is illegal, and park anywhere with a handicap.
But exactly, but because of that, we can't count on that being a potential relief to turn people around, because you never know when it's going to be occupied or not. I'm going to go through the formality of opening the floor to the public. There's nobody here, I'm going to close the floor to the public. So, now we can go back to our deliberations. I'd feel a heck of a lot better about a potential solution such as designating a space as a designated turnaround space, except that the owner of the property isn't represented here.
Right.
There's other interests to be considered here, and Dave raises a very good point about ease of access into the building. We're eliminating a lot of spaces here, and then to talk, that are near the entryways to the tenant spaces, and now we're talking about eliminating another one? I don't feel good about that at all. Any other, yes, Brian?
No, I concur. I think you took the words right out of my mouth, because I'm, I mean, has the property owner signed off on any of this, let alone eliminating an additional parking space, not to mention the other tenants that are in there? I mean, well, I guess there's just one tenant in there right now in addition to Dunkin' Donuts.
There's two. There's two.
Oh, okay.
And one is a restaurant. So, we're saying that just the Dunkin' Donuts people are going to be turning around, but the restaurant people are going to have to turn around, and the other business?
Yeah, there's two tenants. I have spoken to the property owner. He is a new property owner now out of California. He does have the plans. Unfortunately, he wasn't been able to be here today. He is agreeable to what we can figure out, agreeable to everybody in the room. He does have the plans, he does, he has spoken to the rest of the tenants in this unit, and they are aware of what we want to try to do here with the drive-through. The other two individual tenants being evening businesses are okay with what we're trying to do. And we, of course, will get consent on those individuals and the landlord, of course.
What time does that restaurant open again?
Which one?
The restaurant on the end.
I think it's 10:30, 10:31, yeah.
Oh, so it's quite a bit later.
Yeah, and by the time, and our peak hours for Dunkin' are 6:00 to 10:00 a.m. in the mornings.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
You know, my feeling on this is that, I think that is a needed amenity for the folks going to and from. Work in the morning, I see regularly people going in and out of the Dunkin' Donuts for a minute, two minutes. I think that the drive-through is needed. I am concerned about that parking space, though. So, to me, you know, the only way that I could support it would be under a stipulation that we have a no-parking turnaround, designated parking space, that would have to be stipulated, like, so if we did approve it, that we would have that along with formal. I know that the petitioner is saying that there is an agreement from the owner, an agreement from the other two businesses. I think that we should be provided that. And under those sort of circumstances, that would be something that I could get behind.
I agree. I think there's another issue here that we haven't talked about, though. One of the key considerations that we need to consider for a special use permit for a drive-through is there's no bailout lane here. So, not only do we have a traffic problem with people maybe not being able to turn around and get out, if there's a stall or breakdown in the drive-up lane, there's no way to get around it.
I did notice the Dunkin' Donuts that has gone in within the last couple of years behind the BP station.
Hasn't been.
Washington and Hunt Club also does not have a no bailout. You're stuck when you're in that line.
But it's a single-use building.
Yeah.
And just so, if you remember, that requirement for a bailout lane is relatively new. It went into our zoning ordinance when we adopted the update, the comprehensive update of the zoning ordinance in 2015. So, you are going to see a lot of drive-throughs around town that don't have a bailout lane, but we've had a couple come in since, and we get the bailout lane, so.
Is this something with the bypass lane? So, we did a turning radius study. It's part of the civil engineering submido, and we are demonstrating that if someone was to turn around and go, that is met. Is that what?
Now, the issue is if one of the cars that's in line waiting for the drive-up window to service them, if one of those four cars up there has a mechanical problem and breaks down, there's no way to get around it. That's what the bailout concept is.
Okay.
Questions, discussion, comments? Yes, Edwin?
I agree that this really would be a great amenity for this business. I think Dunkin' Donuts without a drive-through doesn't work all that well. They don't, they don't have, I mean, they have people who want to grab something on the way to work and getting out, especially in bad weather, and running in is tough. So, I was all for this. The biggest concern I have is the turnaround, and like, I think it needs to be approved first by the building owner, and the people in the other units need to know they're going to lose another parking space before we could ever agree on this. I mean, if that's the case, but I don't see any other way to make this work. The bailout lane doesn't bother me all that much, because how many times has this happened in the other restaurants? I mean, we got, you know, tons of them. Wendy's doesn't have a bailout lane, you know, many of them don't. I don't see this being an issue all the time. If it was a new restaurant being built, I'd probably push for that more, because then they have more opportunity to do that. But in this case, they can't put a bailout lane in. They don't have the ability to do that. They did come up with, you know, an idea thereafter of the island, so you can turn out, come back if you need to, but anyway, that's my opinion. I would have liked to have passed it tonight, but I don't, I don't think that's possible.
Well, you can make that a condition, and then they would furnish that information to the board.
That's what I'm getting at, is that we put those stipulations in of having a turnaround lane, and then, you know, written approval from the tenants and from the owner or landlord. If you have all that, I could support it.
I guess where I'm coming, feeling on this one is, it's kind of similar to the question that we had in the last meeting, in terms of what's a hardship and what's not a hardship. I agree totally that it'd be great for Dunkin' to have a drive-up. I mean, it's typically seen at a Dunkin' facility, but if it doesn't fit properly on the site, doesn't mean it's the right thing to do. I mean, they've been established there for how many years without a drive-through, and now this is a necessity? I just don't feel good about the safety issues, the practical issues in terms of creating tension between tenants, between customers of the facility. I think, I don't think it's a wise thing to do, but that's, I'm one vote.
Well, I, you know, and I understand what you're saying. I think the one thing that we need to take a look at as well is to have a level playing field between Starbucks and Dunkin' Donuts. They have a drive-through. I don't know what the sales distribution is between both businesses, so rather than risk having Dunkin' Donuts potentially leave for another area that has a drive-through facility, I just, I think it would be good to try and accommodate, I know it's not ideal, but accommodate as best we can.
Okay. Question for Brian and staff. Assuming that we do advance a motion that has those conditions that have been articulated, are you comfortable that we're giving the Village Board? Good input? Yes, I mean, if, as I understand it, you want to have one of the parking places, and probably the one that would be, you know, closest to the Dunkin' Donuts at the end of that trapped area, to be hatched marked as a no-parking area to allow additional maneuvering. You can make that a condition of your recommendation. I will say this, I think, I don't think asking for the tenant's permission is something you have to put in the motion. It just.
I think it has to be ownership.
It has to be the ownership.
Yeah.
That's the point. And what they'd have to do is, they would have to establish that the only way they're going to get a building permit for this, it has to be included in, you know, if we write it into the ordinance that that's a requirement, then a building permit would not be issued unless that that's provided for.
Correct.
So, you could do that, and I think you can leave it at that. You don't have to worry about some of the mechanics. Okay. Obviously, the tenants, you know, have some interest. You've heard some testimony that they're copacetic with this plan, and that's something that could be addressed between now and the board meeting.
Yeah, but the point is, I mean, they're the current tenants, that there's nothing to say that they're going to be future tenants. But that's why it's important for the ownership to sign off on it, because the ownership has to fully understand how their hands are tied in terms of, you know, this property being commercially viable in the future. I mean, there's.
Right.
There's some.
I agree. Yeah, there's, I mean, if I was a prospective tenant looking at the other buildings, or the other spaces in that building.
Yeah.
I'd walk away just because I couldn't have a parking place in front of my door.
And just so you know, the property owner has signed off on this plan. I mean, they would not be before us for a petition for a special use with not the property owner's approval. The additional parking stall is not, you know, that you're talking about having them stripe out, is not part of what the owner understands the plan to be, so that would be the change that he would need to sign off on.
So, there's something in the materials where we have ownership sign off?
Yeah, you have to have that to go forward with a petition for a special use. They have to have proof of standing, and they are.
The tenant just can't show up.
I can't copy the petition, so.
Okay. Yes, Edwin?
Would the other two tenants be notified that there was a modification to the plans before the Village Board meeting?
The owner is, the owner of the property is notified, and all owners within 500 feet. We also post a sign on the property, so if they saw the sign, they could call, they could talk, but, you know, call us, they could come in and take a look at the plans, they could come to the public hearing. We've not gotten any calls or questions about it. I can't speak to whether the property owner has talked to the other tenants, but they do not get the notice that we are required to provide.
Right, but you give a notice, but is there another notice that goes out before the Village Board?
No.
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 So, they would not know that there was any changes made? If they'd already looked at this and said, "I'm fine with it, I'm not showing up to the meeting," they're not going to find out.
There's nothing, there's nothing within the village's control to assure that the tenants have been informed of this. It's up, the legal notices that the village issues goes to the owner of the property. It is incumbent upon the owner of the property to notify his customers. Okay.
Got it.
Okay.
So, you know, there could be something in the lease.
So, they don't, they don't get a letter, right?
Right. They don't get a letter. I mean, to Tracy's point, the tenants could very well just know that there's something happening because the sign's out in front that says there's a public hearing.
Right.
But they don't, I didn't notice where the sign was. I mean, is it on Grand?
I didn't even see it.
I, that's why I didn't notice.
Should be right up front along Grand Avenue.
So, I mean, but, I mean. So, I mean, but, I mean, somebody driving by could think that is for anything in that greater.
Right.
Greater complex. It could be, they could be thinking it's related to Baymont or the, or the, the hot dog place, or the pizza place, or, you know, anything in there. I mean, there's nothing to say that.
But even the notice to the property owners are not going to include the detailed drawings, you know?
Correct.
It's just a, it's a notification of them that if they want to learn more, they're welcome to attend the meeting.
But, but in this case, the property owner's been notified because of the special use being.
Oh, right. I, I, I'm making the distinction between the tenants and the owner.
Right, okay.
I think it's, uh, the part of the record.
When I was speaking, yeah.
The owner knows about this.
Yes, sir.
When I was speaking to the, um, property owner regarding sign-off of the document that you were referring to, he did mention, um, speaking to the tenants, and I am at least 95% sure that he has informed the tenants about Dunkin' and the expansion of the, uh, drive-through. So, I'm pretty sure they do know about it. I'm not sure why they're not here, or if they had any questions about it or whatnot.
But we don't know what the extent of their, their knowledge is.
True.
Okay. I mean, we have to assume that the tenant wants to have happy, I mean, the landlord wants to have happy tenants. It's really incumbent upon the landlord to work with his tenants.
Okay. All right, any other discussion, questions? Yes, Brian?
I just have a general procedural question. Um, so, the PUD that this property owns, was the PUD just for this parcel, or is it like the entire, is it like a large PUD?
Just for this parcel.
So, is the site plan then have to be amended, or?
Through this special use process, that's what we're doing.
Okay. Well, there's no reference to changing the site plan at all, so it was just, you know, something that I was curious about.
Okay, any other questions, comments? If not, someone, uh?
So, if we make a motion, it would be with a stipulation, what we're saying is that the ownership angle and the notifying the tenant angle would not be part of the motion. Am I correct?
Well, the motion would be that it would be conditioned upon, our recommendation is conditioned, is conditioned upon, uh, removing another parking place, having it striped out, um, and it's also conditioned on the other open items that are out there, uh, not limited to, but including the, the licensing agreement being a valid agreement to assure that there's parking spaces, um, off-site as, as proposed.
Those, those would be two appropriate, uh, conditions of the approval.
I have one other question.
Yes.
Could they have cut into that green area in the front and moved the lane further away from the building?
That was one of the options that the traffic engineer came up with. You then need a variance because you're not meeting the setback. You're encroaching into the setback that's in the planned unit development also. Um, so there were issues with that.
They're already cutting into the setback anyway on the one end.
No, they're staying within the confines of the existing pavement right now.
Right, right now, but I mean, the pavement is closer to the street on the one end than the other.
Correct, but it would, it would take up.
Right.
You would lose all of that setback. That's a requirement of the planned unit development, and it's a requirement of the underlying ordinance that you have a 25-foot setback, so that would.
Yeah, okay.
Be an amendment to the planned unit development. It was considered. Um, it is an option. I think that the applicant preferred this approach, and the owner supported it.
Well, it seems like a much easier way to do it. I just thought it might be a more viable option. It would've left a bigger turnaround area in the end down there. It was just a thought.
That option does exist, so if you.
I take it they didn't, uh, think it was a viable option, or?
There were two pretty much viable options, and, you know, it was the consensus that this was the preferred approach, but.
There are some easements along this way that are used for electric and, uh, telecommunications.
Ah, okay.
All right.
Okay, any other questions, comments, concerns? Anybody willing to advance a motion? As, as is customary, we would advance a motion in the affirmative. She come from our newest commissioner.
That's unkind. Put her on the spot.
So, the stipulation again is the parking spa, I'm trying to make it as, as simple, use the, keep it simple process here. So, it would be subject to the exception of, well, it's gonna be, uh, just, uh, as a point of order, a favorable recommendation with two conditions. Uh, one, that the, uh, parking license agreement, uh, has to be, um, executed, and second, that there has to be one of the, um, and I, I, I think there's, I think the, uh, the record will reflect that the thought is that one of the current, currently shown parking spaces would be, um, removed as a parking stall and, uh, be, uh, I guess, signed or, um, hatched.
Stripped.
To show that it could, yeah. Uh, striped so that it, it could be used as a turnaround stall.
Okay.
So, I'll go ahead and make the motion. I make a motion that, uh, for a special, for a, uh, special use permit to be, uh, recommended to allow the establishment and operation of a drive-through without a bailout lane for Dunkin' Donuts located at 5414 Route 132, Suite 400, uh, with the following conditions: a parking licensing agreement executed and a current parking space that is nearest the front doors of the establishment, uh, converted to a striped turnaround lane.
That work?
Okay, I, do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, second by Mr., Mr. Pam. I'd just like to make sure it's clarified that we're making a recommendation to the village board.
Yes, recommendation.
Okay.
I thought I said it.
It, it, it was, it was there, but not there. Um.
I was winging it.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? Can we have roll call, please?
Bow.
Aye.
Garrity.
Aye.
Dornthoff.
Nay.
Path.
Aye.
Riley.
Aye.
And Sula.
Nay. Um, motion carries four to two. Um, as we've indicated, we're a recommending body to the village board. Clara or Tracy will, um, you know, coach you through the next steps and let you know when it's going to, uh, appear before the village board. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, next item is a, another public hearing, a zoning ordinance text amendment. Clara?
Yep. The Village of Gurnee has petitioned for a text amendment to Article 13 dot 12 of the Gurnee zoning ordinance titled "Master Sign Plan." Specifically proposed is a reduction from three to two in the number of required ways signage must be unified for office, service, and industrial uses as part of a master sign plan. The zoning ordinance previously required that new multi-tenant developments provide a master sign plan that provided unification of signs in at least three ways. About three years ago, the code was amended because of a concern that franchise retail tenants were not able to be as flexible as other non-franchise businesses in regards to sign color, font size, sign type, and, um, others. For that reason, we amended the code to require that retail tenants only need to unify signs in two ways. At this time, office service tenants that are also franchise businesses are expressing an inability to unify in three ways as well. Because these businesses have the same trademark ID issues associated with franchise retail businesses, staff is proposing an amendment to the text of the zoning ordinance to require that all master sign plans, no matter if it's for office, service, industrial, or retail, be required to unify in two methods, not three. This would keep all types of businesses consistent in the number of methods that signs need to be unified, which makes it easier for buildings that have a mix of office, service, and retail uses. As with all zoning ordinance text amendment petitions, the planning and zoning board will make a recommendation that will be forwarded to the village board for their determination.
Okay, thank you. Um, just to, to clarify for the record, this item is a public hearing. There is actually no, nobody here beyond the zoning board and members of staff, so there's no one to swear in, and there's no public testimony going to be available. Um, any, any questions or comments? It seems pretty straightforward. We're just, we're just making two different sections of the code that are very, very similar, the same.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
What are the two methods?
So, there's a, uh, few different ones that can be chosen. Some of them are like sign color, font style, sign type, mounting height. I believe there's one more. Uh, there are options that they can choose. They have to unify, uh, two currently if it's a retail use and three if it's office service.
Two out of a list of.
They get to choose, right.
Exactly. And they get to choose themselves, uh, when the building's built, 'cause this only applies to new developments.
Got it. Okay.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Does someone like to make a motion? Yes, Dave?
I move forward a favorable recommendation. Ask amended.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Bow.
Aye.
Garrity.
Aye.
Dornthoff.
Aye.
Path.
Aye.
Riley.
Aye.
Or Sula, and Sula.
Aye, motion carries. Um, next meeting is scheduled for the 20th. Do we, are we anticipating a meeting?
Yes, we will have a special use permit likely.
Okay. Um, just a, one other comment from the, from the chair. Why do we have such a hard time making a recommend, a, a motion? It, it seems like inevitably we have a great discussion. I ask people, is anybody willing to advance a motion, and everybody immediately stares down at the table. Um, it makes me feel like we didn't either, I'm not sure what, what the message is. I mean, it makes me feel like we haven't totally vetted out the, the situation, which is never the case. So, why do we have trouble advancing a motion?
I just have trouble with the wording, so that's it.
I, we might come up with a template.
Yeah.
We might come up with a template, perhaps.
I mean, I, I would say this, um, Jim, that from attending several village board meetings in a row, um, it does seem to be simpler at the village board. They just will make a quick eye motion, and the mayor says, "Yes," and move on. There's not as much procedure that we're asking to do here. Um, so, for what it's worth, and I think that people may stumble because they don't wanna see it the wrong way.
Okay, all right. All right, I'll, I'll, I'll say one thing. Go ahead, Dave.
I'd just like to share the load a little bit.
Okay, that's fair, that's fair, that's fair. Yeah. I, I, what Dave is trying to say is sometimes, um, the more senior, in terms of tenure, people on the, on the board feel there's pressure on them to, to make the motions, and they like to spread the load, um, is, is what he's trying to say.
Got it.
Is there maybe a template or something that we could put together?
We, we, we can, we can try. Keep in mind, we've got, in this room right now, we have two, four, six, seven, seven coaches. So, if, if someone is struggling with a motion, there's always the opportunity when I ask, "Does anybody wanna clarify by the motion or have questions on the motion?" We can fix it. So, so, you know, you know, don't, don't be shy.
I mean, ideally, the, the best thing to do is write it out in advance. Unfortunately, I didn't have an opportunity to do that.
Yeah.
The, the other thing you can do is.
Sometimes they change.
Look at the agenda. I mean.
I mean, the guts of the motion generally does, since the conditions have changed.
Right.
Right.
You guys do have a tougher job than, uh, the board trustees.
Yes, yeah.
They're just, you know, moving the pass and ordinance.
Right.
Yeah, and that's, and that's, that's every, everything on their agenda, so.
I mean, um, and it's very much appreciated. For, for those of you that, that weren't able to, to make it to the, to the mayor's thank you, uh, uh, function the other day, I mean, she said some very, very nice things about this group.
She did?
Yeah, she, she really did.
You were there?
Yeah, I went, yeah.
He was travel slow.
Huh?
He was travel slow, apparently. I didn't hear anything.
Okay, well, she said some very, very nice things.
Well, everything except about Brian.
They're, they're, they're very appreciative of the detail that we have to.
Just kidding, Brian.
I didn't hear what you said. Um, but they're very appreciative of the detail that we have to, to massage and deal with on a, on a month-by-month basis, so. Yes.
I just thought Dave is really good at giving this, that maybe he should volunteer to give classes to that stuff.
No problem.
Or, or, or perhaps in our, in our notes in the future, could we, could we get a template?
We can put something in there, just, you know, we don't know, we can do that.
I, I.
We're, we're not recommending when we put that in there, though, so, but we can do that. The other thing that I would do is, you know, anytime you're stumbling for words, just go back to the agenda, 'cause the agenda will basically, like here, special, you know, recommend favorably a petition for a special use to allow the establishment and operation of a drive-through without a bailout. It's kinda all there in the agenda item.
Right.
But we can certainly do that, and we'll try to do that with the next.
I always, I always refer or look to that for, just prior to crafting.
Yeah.
Just to kind of.
It's helpful.
So, that's, that's great advice.
Yeah.
Well, if I, if I was gonna craft a template, I would say I recommend that we make a favorable motion to the village board for the materials as presented with the exception of, and then deal with whatever we talked about. In, in tonight's case, it was just emphasizing they need to get the parking agreement in place, and, and, and the second is the striped area. I mean.
We'll start adding that to the notes in the future.
Okay.
And then highlight it some manner, so hopefully you can just quickly go to that.
But, but there's never gonna be a perfect template, because it's, it's, it's very dynamic.
Yep, got it.
Okay.
I'll try to step up, Jim.
Well, I just, you know, I mean, you know, I, I've stayed here almost two years, and I never knew that this was an issue. I just assumed that you liked doing the motions, and then I, you're filling in the gaps, saying that, well, it's the senior, but if we don't know that.
You know how you learn from?
Right.
Why are you sitting, be sure?
Okay. All right. And, and eight, yes?
So, are the minutes gonna say, like, Chairman Sula took the commissioners to the woodshed?
For their lack of a [inaudible].
Hopefully, if there is that in the minutes, it'll say, uh, Chairman Sula expressed a, a concern about.
Brave disappointment.
No, never, never. You got, you got, Brian, it was terrible.
Don't put too much in there. It'll be an [inaudible] violation.
Oh, okay. All right, any other, uh, that was all public comment, by the way. Yes, sir.
Move to adjourn.
Okay, you have a second?
Second.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, everyone.